To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, welcome to the work session. I asked you guys Secretary of Treasure, Pell to call the role, please.
President Scott Hawitz.
Right here.
Secretary of Treasure, William Pell is present. Edward J. Warner is acting today. Ann Walker.
I think Ed is on his way, but a long way.
I think he may not make it till one.
One.
Oh, okay.
But we'll see.
Ann Walker.
Here.
William Parrish.
Present.
All right.
Ready to go.
So, December 18th, nine thirty a.m. meeting here at, had a rainy town hall today. Stormy, I should say. Get right into the agenda.
I'm just texting Lisa.
Lisa?
Yeah.
Go over some water fowl issues. It's rough on the sea today. The sea was angry.
Yes, yes. It made its way onto Deerfield Road. Pretty flooded.
Shinkock has got some big white caps on it. I'm sure the ocean is huge. Erosion city today, unfortunately.
You want to come back? Yeah, she didn't text me back yet. Do you want us to come back to those?
Yeah, we'll come back. So, I have a bunch of applications that are on. First one I've got is Nancy McCabe, thirty-three Miniola Court, Hampton Bay. I see Dynamic Legal. Kevin is here. Come on, you gotta, you gotta either go here or there. You can't, yeah. Were you interrupting? Were you interrupting something?
Talking to Sean. You had requested an architectural drawing which has been submitted.
All right. State your name and sign in. Let's be official. I know you.
Kevin Springer, Dynamic Legal. Hampton Bay, New York. On behalf of Nancy McCabe, thirty-three Miniola Court. As I was mentioning, the previous hearing, you had requested a architectural drawing for a twenty-five-foot catwalk with removable stairs.
Right.
And that has now been submitted. Fairly straightforward. We've done a couple on that coastline now.
Right. So, now you're Blue Book compliant?
I am.
Fulfilled all the requests that the board had for this thing to advance.
That's what I did.
Permit issuing standards, James Durie, would you say?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? We've looked at this and we've adjusted it. Now he's met with the conditions that we requested. If that's the case, we could advance it and let Mr. Springer go on to his regularly scheduled programming.
All right.
All right.
And thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, we jumped on a bit of efficiency here.
Sorry about that. I was trying to print something out that.
No problem.
Did that have stamp plans?
Yes.
We'll be quick.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, first up is Craig Eldune. We've not received phone call, letter, anything. So, I think at this point.
He's done.
He's done. Yeah.
Yeah, you see, this is Trustee Warner's.
Do you want to hold it until?
I really.
Only because maybe he spoke to him?
No, he told me he didn't get in touch with him.
Oh, he didn't?
Oh, he already really got information.
He told me that last week.
Okay.
It's up to you, whatever you want to do. Scott?
I think it sounds to me like we're well past the day here, you know?
If he wanted it, if he wanted it, he would be here.
Yeah.
These other duck hunters would love to have that spot.
I concur. I would say that's, that's it, you know? We'll take it.
Put it back on the waitlist?
Back on the waitlist.
And the same for you, Mr. Parrish, Mr. Kilfoyle. I've not received anything from him.
No, I'm going to get in touch with them.
You weren't able to?
No.
You have to, excuse me one second. You have to go back to Craig Dunn, make sure his blind is not, it's been removed, if he has a blind in that location.
Okay. I'll check with Rich.
He's not off the hook until that, until, you know.
There's no blinder.
Yeah.
Good point.
Okay.
Same thing with, with the next one, too.
So, his spot is also going back?
Yes.
And I will reach out to Rich and let him know and have him check on those.
And the same for.
And the same with Alexander. Nothing?
Yes.
Same?
Yep.
All righty.
Yeah, check for blinds there, too.
Yep. All right, we are done.
Thanks so much.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm sorry if I did that late. It didn't come as attachment.
I can't send it. I'll try. I was asking just to help.
Joe did. So, I'll print it out for you.
Thanks, Lisa.
All right, First Coastal. Billy Mack, I've got FSK Capital, three Carter, Scott Realty, five Carter, Scott Realty Corp., seven Carter, Hampton Marina. I keep my boats there. Hey, guys.
Billy Mack, First Coastal, for Hampton Shipyard.
Now, we did give a lot of permits for repairing bulkheads here in the past.
Yeah.
I understand you want to tweak.
Yeah, so, bulkhead has been granted, a permit has been granted before for the bulkhead, as you've said. We're looking to, we're looking to get this permit pretty soon because the DEC permit times out. We'd have to reapply in February. So, it just gives us enough time to get the bulkhead portion that's part of on the DEC done. And what we're looking to do is kind of revitalize this underutilized marina and get some more boat space for the community. So, we're looking to replace the bulkhead and add dock slips where there is now a, kind of like an old rail system that used to take the boats into the.
You're taking that rail system out?
It's all coming out.
All coming out.
Yeah. And we're building a compliant, we're actually moving the bulkhead back about fifteen feet from where the end of the rail bulkheads are and then adding a lot of drainage because this whole section has, it's all downhill. And right now, it's not ideal. So, we're looking to add some green space, a lot of drainage, obviously the buffer area.
Is the building coming down or is it staying?
Both things are going to stay. That's the plan. Yep. And the idea is to get the marina back up and going. They're going through some changes there. Kevin Skopanich, the youngest, is going to continue to run the operations there. And we're excited to kind of get this back to life. It's, I don't know from both, Bill, you haven't been there, but everybody else has been there and seen it. You've been there a while ago, probably.
Yeah, the last couple of years.
Yeah. I don't think it's changed one bit since then.
It needs resurrection.
Yeah.
You know, it is diamond in the rough.
So, can you go back to the previous picture? So, see, we have the balloon line?
Mm-hmm, yep.
That's going to be the.
That's your third from the.
Yeah, so you, I just want to, you know, make sure it's in the permit and record. So, they, I don't want to have the same trouble that they have like in Mill Pond where they're putting eighty-foot boats where it should be a fifty-foot boat.
Absolutely. I mean, this, this photo that I sent the other day, the lower one.
That has to be loaded, loaded into permit that you can't have boats sticking out so far past the poles.
Yeah, I would say no, no dock, no boats on the outside of that.
Dock either.
That L.
Yeah. This is a pretty good perspective of that. You know, it pretty clearly shows the third of the, of the water body as just dockage space.
You also have to worry about the channel there, too.
Yeah.
I mean, you can have it over, you can have less than a third or more than a third, but if you're in where the deep water is, you have a problem.
Yeah, it's deep through that whole system, which is great.
Yeah, the shallowness comes further at the headwaters.
Right by the boat ramp.
Yeah.
Yeah, it gets a little shallow there. It's, you know, maybe it's four feet at low tide by the boat ramp, but all in here is, you know, eight feet plus. Now, while it goes, you know.
The small is primarily, you're going to be catering to smaller vessels.
What is this zone for, out of curiosity?
Anne, do you remember?
RWB.
So, it's not in the list of eighteen marinas which.
Won't have that charter capability.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a bad idea.
It's a bad idea.
Yeah, I mean, if you need my personal opinion on that, I agree. These are small businesses that don't need to be squeezed any further.
It's a bad idea.
Yeah, and this obviously is a small business that's been desperate to try to thrive and this will help it, or survive, I should say. Thrive is.
Well.
Do you have a schematic of the drainage, only because, only because there's quite a difference in elevation from the street to the water there? And you've done extensive plans for catching that storm runoff, so I just wanted to make sure that that's adequately.
Yeah, the detail's not necessarily there. They're all mentioned where the dry wells will be, and those will be capture basins. So, that's going to be part of the, the complete rebuild. And it is pretty extensive. I don't know if you need a, this is a full-scale version of the plan as well.
And this is historical working waterfront that dates back to?
At least seventy years, maybe more.
That was a shipbuilding facility, so it's important that we.
Improve it.
Yeah.
Improve it and resurrect it.
Bring it up to code.
Right, exactly. Because it's been sitting sort of, as you said, underutilized for.
We were very interested in this property.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, this is a, this is a diamond in the rough, as I see it. And you need, this community is a maritime-based community, and you need to resurrect these facilities so that you can, you know, continue on for the next seventy years. It's kind of sad to see, you know, you had, you know, these beautiful, beautiful boats, yachts.
Iconic.
Being built, iconic, Columbia's, being built right there in East Quogue by this, this family of craftsmen.
Yeah, yeah. And they're still around.
They're still around in this. The talent that's there, it's like this, this legacy, you know, and you really, it's kind of good that Kevin, the youngest, is still going to be there.
Yeah, we're excited.
Handling operations because I really think that's, that's cool. You know, being a dock rat myself, you know.
Seen it all.
I own three boats. I've seen it all. I love, I love boats. I love the waterfront. And it's just, you know, you want to see something like this not disappear and become something else. You want to see it retained for the.
Gone for years.
Yeah, I mean, I wish they would still be building boats there.
I agree.
You know, it's that winter store there, and they'd go in there for repairs, going in and out of that creek. And it's, it's a necessary service, needs to be provided to a maritime community. And.
I agree.
You know, your ideas with drainage are good. You are, you know, it does need to be elevated. It overtops too often.
Way too often.
Comes all the way up.
Yeah, I think I showed Ann and Bill, and you've seen it, the.
We also want to.
Mark on the bottom of the buildings.
Also, in this, in the permit, we should put for pledge boats and commercial boats to protect them later on.
We have no problem with commercial boats, you know?
When you go to have that, put that in the permit.
Right.
Because you never know what's going to happen.
Well.
Happen down the line.
You've, you've seen this. There's, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of the flavor of our community relies on also the commercial aspect. And, you know, I used, I ran charter boats for, for years until I founded the big charity tournament, and I gave all my charter time to the, to the charity. So, you can only do so many things. And, you know, you have families that would come out, fathers and sons and daughters and families.
Sure.
You could fluke and strike bass fishing, whatever, easy pieces of stuff.
Generational.
The folks were out there. You would, you would get them out on the water, enjoy your day, teach them something. They'd experience something. And, you know, those are memories that they would make that would last a lifetime. There's no harm to any of that. It's all good wholesome, you know, activity that, you know, it's what I believe we're all about. You know, I think you need to preserve that.
Agreed.
You know, you need to preserve that. And the fact, you know, you're taking out a lot of old material. You're going to put in new material. You're going to put drainage. You're going to put buffers. You're going to protect that wetland there, and then you're going to preserve a historical, traditional use of our community. It's good to see an investment going in to preserve that.
And you had, you did site visits with several board members, including Ed, right?
Including Ed, yeah, absolutely. Ed was in favor of it? His, he wanted to see this perspective, which I put together. He asked for the flagging of the outside and.
And the channel.
Yeah, exactly. So, we did, there is a flag there. You can't see it in this photo, but that gave us the ability to, you know, map this out so you can get a really good perspective.
My only comment was make even the one return. I don't know if you've given that any thought.
I fixed that. That's in the plan.
You did? Okay, good.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah, I would leave that return.
To the south.
To the north, actually.
The north end.
Four, four days like today, as a matter of fact.
Yeah.
You did get, there was, there's a return that, that is already in existence there that if you get a heavy surge coming from the southeast, like you're getting like today, you're actually protecting the native wetland that's to the north of that. If you eliminate that return, it's just going to roll right on through. So, it's already there and, and the wetland is fine. And I would say, don't mess with it. Just let it be.
Included that and updated that. That was a very good suggestion. Thank you.
That's my view.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
I don't, I don't, I don't. I think, I think they've addressed a lot based on what they got going on there.
I would make sure, in the special condition, put all that language about commercial, non-commercial boat, boat and boats, all that.
James, you taking note?
Do you want that added to the cover sheet or is that just the?
I would add it to the cover sheet. That way, it's easy to spot.
And also the, that the boat dockage area is going to be, the boat dockage area is indicated, depicted on the plan, not on the outside of it because you're going to choke down.
Inside.
Yeah, you're going to stay inside of it.
Yeah.
Not on the outside because you're going to choke the creek down, and we don't want to do that. That's a problem. So, that'll be in special condition or on the cover sheet as well, that all, all dockage will be interior of the L dock.
Okay.
We've got our finger peer at the very end of that. We're going to have to take a look at that after this storm because with super high tides and whatnot, that thing gets beat up down there.
Yeah, a little shallow up there, but, okay, happy to.
How many boats are you going to put in there?
Cover letter.
You said thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Stamp plan.
Looks like it. But you got like eighteen footers is basically all.
Yeah, all of them, yeah.
You're going to have very, very small boats up in there. But if you think back in the day, you remember back in the day when we were doing, you know, tow, nix, towline, you had all the wrecked boats and everything running all over.
Big boats, it's not always better.
Exactly, especially back in these little areas.
They start as small, they go big, they go back to small.
Yeah, and all, you know, inboards are a thing of the past. Everybody's got an outboard now.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the way the industry's going. They're going outboards. You know, they're getting like forty, fifty-foot outboards.
Right.
You know?
Multiple engines or whatever.
Exactly. It's the way, it's the way the industry has been, has been going.
I'm old school about one.
One screw.
I'm crazy. I got, I got two, two diesels. Well, I have three boats, so.
You can never, you can never have enough.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
Are we good with?
I'm, I'm good with this. I went and reviewed this whole thing.
I'm fine with it. It's a very good plan.
Trustee Parrish.
I think it's a good plan. I'm a sort.
As long as there has good language in it for, for the future.
Yep, happy to accommodate that. Yeah, well, I'll go through that with James.
Thank you.
And we'll give you a.
Because when we bought our place, they took us to court about having commercial and non-commercial together.
How can you, you know, separate it if you got the space?
You got to accommodate.
Got to accommodate.
Just got to be sensible with your regulation, that's all.
Great.
Okay? Don't go anywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Because the next one is you as well. So, we'll advance that with special conditions. And we've got Sunset Equity Holdings LLC.
Yes.
We talked about this one a bit, right?
Yep, and we dropped the.
Elevation?
Dropped the elevation to maintain. This is a boat slip that's surrounded by marsh, basically.
Yes.
And it has been very functional. It's just time to be rebuilt.
And the bulking is just around the perimeter of the.
Just where the slip is.
Yeah, that's not going to change.
Yeah.
Right, you're just going exactly where you are.
Yep.
No giant increase. It's all wetlands, all around it, behind it.
Yep, pretty straightforward.
It's not going to do any, any bit of good.
Good.
James?
Do you know what I mean?
Exactly what we asked him to do?
Yeah, that's in the updated plan.
Ian?
I'm fine.
Trustee Parrish?
Good.
Okay, advance that, too.
I'm just seeing stamp plans for that.
Okay, thanks, James.
Stamp plans on everything.
Pardon me?
Stamp plans on everything.
Yeah, of course. And, and with the previous one, quarter lines. Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And we may or may not be back for the next.
All right. Thank you.
Trustee Pell? Reason to smile, one eighty-three Shore Road. No one here?
Where did we stand with this?
James, where did we stand? I know he said another thing in the cover sheet. On one eighty-three Shore Road?
I think we need him here.
Okay, he's not here?
Maybe wait until the end of the session and see if he shows up.
Hold it for now.
Hold it.
Okay.
Do yours, Anne.
Forty-two North Drive, Gannett Creek, Village of North Haven. So, anybody here from Costello or North Haven Village? So, this project is the Eastern Jetty that projects out into Shelter Island Sound. It was brought before us in the last work session. As, as you can see, there's a sixty-foot offshore component to this as well as a, I believe, a twenty-four-foot return that was proposed on the inside. After discussion with the board, the twenty-four-foot return was removed from the project at this time and solely this permit will be for the, the sixty-foot jetty. I did want to point out that we received an email that I shared with all of you from the Gannett Creek Association President expressing his concerns about the removal of the twenty-four-foot extension due to the permitting from DEC, Department of State, and Army Corps, already having issued approvals for the return and the concern that this would require modifications to those permits.
So, they've all approved that with only agency or not agency entity that's.
Right, asking for.
So, maybe we need to take another look at this?
Maybe. I was hoping that either the representative for Costello or that the Association President would be here today to discuss.
Let's hold this one, too, because that's what we need to do. I agree.
Okay. But anyway, just to catch everybody up, that's where we stand with that.
Thank you.
Sure. Ninety-eight Point Me Cox Lane, I think I saw an consultants.
Yes.
Here. Suzanne. Okay, this is removal and replacement of an existing wood dock on Swan Creek, Swan Creek off Me Cox Bay. We had gone back and forth with this a bit because we needed some additional bathymetry due to the floating dock not being in quite enough water. If you want to take this over, Suzanne, can you explain?
Sure. There's an existing dock there. It was permitted back in the nineties and built, I think, in nineteen ninety-eight. The dock needs to be replaced. It's treated wood. It's falling apart. And we had proposed, you know, reconstructing it in exactly the same dimensions. The float as it is peaks out just, just past the edge of the Frag Mities. And there's not a whole lot of water there at your mid bay. Of course, this is Me Cox, so there's no daily fluctuations we're dealing with, you know, when the bay is open versus closed. Close, and so at the, where the float is now at mid bay, there's only about two feet of water. If we go out another twenty feet, which is, I looked at all the docks in that water body, that's about how far they're going out from the edge of the Frag Mities. So, this would be in line with the other docks in the area. If we extend it twenty feet, we get to two and a half feet of water.
Thank you.
James, can I have it over shot again, please?
Thank you.
Let me get an old one. It's just to give you an idea of what's going on there. Our concerns had been the, to see what the water depth was, the inside of the float. There's plenty of water across to the other side of the waterway with the extension of this dock.
Yeah, the waterway is approximately four hundred fifteen feet.
Yeah, so we're good as far as.
If you're riding.
Yeah.
Yep.
It wouldn't be, how about a platform?
Well, what's there now is a dock, a floating dock.
Yeah.
There are other, we just got a similar project at one eighty-point Me Cox where we replaced a floating dock with a floating dock in similar water depths. Obviously, a float's a lot easier to get in and out of. They, they kayak.
Okay.
We have kayak racks there. It just would be much easier. I don't think we're at risk. I mean, I think we're proving the situation.
Yeah.
Over what's there because it's.
I'll just throw it out there.
Yeah. They really would prefer to have a float. I think it's reasonable. I think it's Blue Book compliant.
Got to be Blue Book compliant.
Can you cut down on some of the rails, the thickness of the rails on the side?
Um, we can. There, there are rails there now, and there's really dense Frag Mities.
Out to the end, but if you're going to.
We could not have rails over the water.
Yeah.
I can eliminate those.
That would be good.
Yeah, I mean, the, the ones that are closer, that are within the Frag Mities region, no one's going to see those.
Right, I'd get rid of the ones that are, that you don't need.
Beyond that, okay. We can do that. I can revise the drawings to show that.
My only other concern would be, James, do you think we need an advisory letter with this because of the wooden walk? It's not in our area, but in our jurisdiction.
Conservation, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
The, the, you're looking at the wood, the.
Walkway within the buffer.
Within the buffer.
Yes.
That is part of a recent Conservation Board permit. They just reconstructed the house, and that was one, there was already a walkway there. So, that was replaced with non-treated.
So, that's already been accounted for?
Just recently, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So, I can provide a copy of that Conservation Board permit?
That's perfect.
That would be.
Yeah, that's a good question. Normally, it wouldn't be something that you would see through the buffer, but it was pre-existing, so the Conservation Board allowed that to be reconstructed with environmentally friendly materials, and it's two feet above grade.
Put a copy in the file that we chose.
Sure.
I think other than that, unless anyone has any questions or concerns, I'd like to advance this.
I think it's good to advance it.
Okay.
Just need to update plans and stamp.
I can get those to you this week.
Stamp plans, get, get rid of the rails that you don't need.
Yep. Okay. Wonderful.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and then lastly, twelve Green Street. Is anyone here for that? Hello. Okay, this is a project that we were looking at in the last session.
Right.
Um.
Confusion on it.
Yep, there was some confusion, but we now have an updated survey that has been provided. But we still are in need of, and my apologies, I did not get back to, I did not respond to your email of the middle of the week, so I'm sorry. But on that, we had a couple of concerns that we still need addressed. On the survey, it shows that the floating dock is six by twenty. On the survey, it shows that the floating dock is six by twenty, not four by six as was on the plans and so that will have to be removed.
Put back the smaller dock. But what's there, six by twenty or a...
Yep.
The original permit was for four by six. That's why we asked for an as-built survey, which shows a floating dock that's six by twenty. The six by twenty is within three feet of the extended property line. Issue there.
That's not gonna work.
And then we don't have the depth measurements of where the floating dock is currently.
It's gotta be ten feet, right?
Right. Here's the survey that clearly shows that we're, the dock is where it presently is. If we were to ask for the dock to be flipped to the other side, then it would be within, so...
Because you could keep the six by...
It could go to the, where, the east side.
Right, exactly.
We need additional bathymetry to determine whether it can in fact be flipped to the eastern side or southern side of the catwalk.
Right, you understand that?
Yeah, you'd like the floating dock flipped to the other side.
You really need a survey done, a bathymetric survey that would better make, you know, help us collaboratively make a decision of where it would be best suited to put that. But you're already not meeting the standards of having to be ten foot off of the adjoining extended property line. You're too close with that, so this isn't gonna work.
Size of the float.
The size of the float is an issue and I think...
You need the symmetry.
Yes, I think that's the starting point. You need to get a survey done of the contours of where the bottom is. And I think that will help us better guide you on what's gonna make the most sense here and how to deal with it.
All right.
Because you gotta meet those tests. Right, you gotta meet those tests in order for it to be Blue Book compliant. We really, we don't have enough information to really make that determination, but that is out of spec, so we're gonna have to work on this, so you get in there.
Okay.
Well, yep, just remember that this was, this is already built.
Right, but he's...
A decision as-built that was built. We're now trying to correct things that were built.
I get it, but he's looking for a permit and we can't permit something that's not, you know, to our specifications.
Yeah, yeah, agreed. James, is there anything else we needed to address on this? We think we hit all those targets.
Are you clear?
Okay.
Are you clear?
Yeah. I think that was done on the initially, the initial building, the initial permit that was issued to build the dock.
But we, but right now, we don't have enough information with what we're looking at. I mean, James, do we have, we don't have what we need to...
No, I mean, the dock needs to be moved to an area where you have two and a half feet of water.
And it's not within ten feet of the property line?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not gonna work.
And it's too big.
Compared to what was originally approved and proposed, you know, as, as built.
There has to be some modification done to this whole thing.
Yeah.
All right. We can guide you through it, but you need to get this additional information so that you can better look at it.
Then we, we'll just redo that. I mean, we can't have the inspection done now anyway because the dock is gone. I mean, December, they take the dock and they have to remotely, you know...
So we can't inspect because we need everything to be in compliance in order to issue a permit?
It would fail.
Okay.
Yeah, you wouldn't get a compliance certificate, so it would be an immediate failure. So you don't want to do that. You want to get this thing modified so that you have an approvable, Blue Book compliant permit and you need this additional survey and then we're gonna have to make a better determination how it's gonna get sited, where. And then we gotta discuss the size.
Well, yeah, I think in the beginning, he had the small one and I think that honestly, the owner asked him to make it
Bigger?
A bigger, because that's what everybody around him has.
But he didn't modify his permit.
He has to fix the permit.
You gotta modify your permit and then if you go too big, then it's not able to be modified because then you're totally out of spec, so we're getting there, but we're not there yet.
Yeah, okay.
You good?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so those are my three permits for today.
And then, and then Trusty Parish, for his birthday, decided he was gonna put twenty-seven applications on.
Well, actually, twelve.
These glasses.
We got an email that they're asking to hold on the living shoreline. Right, Jessica?
Yes.
So we're just gonna have one on for me.
Just, just one?
Yep, because we're gonna have Mr. Tartunian for Abritus. Apitrus, fifteen seventeen realtor.
So the rest of these are all on hold? This whole job list is on hold?
That's all one project.
It's all one project. They sent an email.
Yes, for Living Shorelines, they asked to hold all the applications.
This is awesome.
So it's gonna, it's gonna go to our new elected officials.
This is your last, this is your last official work session. Trusty Parish. And Trusty Pell and, and
Trusty Welker.
Trusty Welker. It's your last official... Let's drag this right on out. You know?
You know I can do that.
Very easy. Well, between the two of us, we could probably do it about four o'clock.
We got the two best argers back in here. You guys can go at least forty minutes apiece.
You and I. We can go, we can talk about it.
Before I get started, let me, let me say to Trusty Pell, Trusty Welker and Trusty Parish, thank you for your service to this board. It's always been interesting. We've always got it done and best of luck in your next venture.
Thank you.
I'll be seeing you again.
I'll be right here, waiting for you. The old guy, I'm the oldest elected board.
So this is kind of an interesting project.
I've been listening to that for fourteen years.
And have they ever let you down?
Yes.
So Eleven Pine Tree is part of a subdivision from the seventies and the entire area is bulk headed, but over time, this bulkhead was not maintained. And if you take a look at the photos that are in the file, you can see what happened.
Do you have it?
So interestingly, on its own, some Spartina is starting to propagate inside the bulkhead. So this is actually a kind of a proto-living shoreline by itself. The deteriorated bulkhead is acting to block the wave energy and the and that is allowing Spartina to grow in some of the spots. But it's kind of inconsistent and there's still bank erosion occurring because the fetch here is pretty good. It's still to the southwest, it's probably, I don't know, three, four miles across Merches Bay. This is, you know, out near the point, so it even though it's semi-protected, there's a pretty big fetch there. So our treatment was to install a low sill bulkhead to continue to provide some wave break protection. Then to supplement the existal, existing Spartina plantings by putting in some more to do a core log at the base of the, of the embankment and then a rock revetment kind of as a failsafe landward of the mean high water. So that...
How far landward?
Like right at.
Is it touching the mean high water?
Yeah, it's touching the mean high water.
So in our jurisdiction, not kicked to another jurisdiction. It's touching. It's us.
It touches.
So given that this property is inside a bulkheaded canal with a point on the west side of the entrance, I'm just wondering about the rock core dune, the necessary necessity of that, given that you have a low sill bulkhead as well as plantings? I'm just wondering, you know, in the proportion of gray to green structure here, if you're not kind of overarmoring.
Well, you know, that's a good point and I think that there's a number of factors that I weighed in doing this that led me to where I am. The first one is, it's not a canal. This is, this is a point. And so, I don't know, can you pull up an aerial, please, James?
So creek, creek maybe I should say, is that better description?
It's pretty wide. It's several hundred feet across. So this is actually, it's actually a river. Is this beyond river?
Can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
Do you have the date pictures? Because these are very old.
Old pictures, old board.
I'm sure we have up-to-date photos, but nothing has really changed on this site.
This is my last meeting, so this is the last chance I have to break the charts.
Nothing's really changed on this site.
He's right, though, they are old pictures.
Yeah, but we should have some, they should have some new, up-to-date, couple of up-to-date pictures.
We're happy to provide that.
Yeah, because you got your sidekick, it's not like this.
I'm not looking at that.
He's agreeing with it.
So, so back to your question, so it is actually quite wide and it's got direct exposure to the south and to the, and to the west. And the other thing, if you look at the photos, you can see there's ongoing bank erosion right now. And that's because, and we're gonna reduce the height of this bulkhead from, you know, by two feet.
That way we can see where the new pictures, the difference between couple of years.
So you're gonna have a net gain of wetlands here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So you're gonna have a net gain of wetlands and you're gonna be protecting the property landward? Right, as a failsafe.
Right.
And if, you know, with the deep rooted native vegetation, if it all works out, it should be good.
What's on either side of it? Bulkheads, right?
Bulkheading on either side.
How high are those bulkheads?
You know, I don't know the exact height, but you know, five feet, you know, five feet above NADD.
So difference between...
There's gonna be, there's gonna be about two feet of difference.
You're gonna be two feet lower?
We're gonna be two feet lower than there.
Have you heard back from the Army Corps of Engineers? I see there's a letter that was sent in August.
No, but we did hear back from D O S and they're satisfied. And so I think as soon as they issue their concurrence, Army Corps is gonna issue their permit. Also, we qualify under the Army Corps as a nationwide, so I'm pretty sure they're gonna handle it that way.
Okay, so just to go back for a second to, because I don't have plans here, to that rock core dune. What's the size of the rocks that you're proposing in that? And will you be covering, keeping that covered with sand and plantings going forward?
Two feet wide?
What's two feet wide?
Yeah, about two feet wide.
Two feet wide.
Yeah, so it, you know, it's very light stone. I mean, it's twenty-five to a hundred pound stone on top and at the base, it's twenty-five to two hundred. So this is appropriately sized. Well, two hundred's about that big. Twenty-five's only about that big.
So like cobbles?
Yeah, it's like just above cobble size.
But the ones at the bottom of it that are three feet down are the ones that are two hundred pounds?
I think, yeah, I think that that's the right size stone for that spot.
So what's the dimension from the bulkhead back to the start?
The distance from the bulkhead?
Yeah, because I see the two feet for the, you know...
And there's a floating dock on here too on this project. I don't see that on here, Scott.
That's why I asked.
Let me find my...
Well, if it's, if the, if the
I don't have my scale.
The water's touching it, okay, if the high tide is touching it and it's, then it's gonna be the trustee's jurisdiction. If he's coming up and over.
I don't have that dimension stone on here.
Is it scalable?
Yes, but I don't have my scale.
And then you're putting a putting a catwalk there and a floating dock?
A catwalk and a floating dock and you can see the water depths are really quite good.
So you're going way out, it looks like beyond usual, no?
Well, we get just past it and then put the, you know, it's a twenty, I mean, we go past...
It's eighty-three feet long.
Yeah, eighty-three feet.
But you're well beyond the two and a half at the terminus, no? What is those water depths?
Five by eight.
So that's way beyond spec, no? James, I mean, these glasses, it's hard for me to see them.
No, no, you're right, Scott. So, Aram, to Scott's point, like I'm seeing the two and a half feet that should be at the inner edge of the float be more at the beginning of the ramp at the end of the catwalk.
So we gotta pull that back a little bit.
What, what distance do you think? Well, it's eighty-three feet now from high water, but from where it starts.
Right, but we're looking at the inner edge of the float.
Right, so put the inner edge of the float at two five.
And not at six feet.
Right.
That's where you're really close to the shore.
That's, that's the Blue Book specs. I gotta get my new glasses.
And Scott, what did you ask before? What's the distance?
I was just wondering the distance from where the low sill bulkhead was to the start of the, of the rock, the two-foot wide rock.
Make sure it's within the ten feet.
I mean, if the water's touching it, if the water's coming up and high tide is touching that is one thing. I was just wondering what that dimension was because I think the greater that dimension is, the better chance at success that you're gonna have in
It's gonna be so steep.
Exactly, in being successful with the, with the native vegetation and creation of the of the wetland and its ability to thrive.
James, can you scale that? Because the...
He's got a scale there. He's doing it right now.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that. Good.
So you wanna know what the angle is? That's what we're trying to figure.
It doesn't look like it's that much of an angle, but sometimes the pictures are deceiving. But I see the two feet there.
Yeah, it's, it's, this is scaling out at about nine feet from, from the bulkhead to the, to the...
The back of the concrete or to the rocks?
To the front of the rocks.
Rocks.
Right, okay, so that...
But the rocks have a core log in front of them and they're covered.
The rocks are like gonna be a failsafe.
Yeah, they really are a failsafe. That's, that's the object, because, you know, the problem here with the core logs is not just the waves, it's the ice. The ice, once the ice gets that into that core log, it can just pull it right out.
But core logs are not meant to be permanent.
No, right.
They're meant to be.
So in theory, that vegetation will, you know, establish and really do a great job at what it's supposed to do. Protecting that property and establishing a new wetland there, new, new...
So to that point, that was my question previously. So it shows here the sand and the beach grass on top of the rock core dune landward of the core log. In the special conditions, should we not mandate that the, that rock core dune is kept? Mandate sand replenishment and replanting if in fact...
I think that makes the most sense.
Yeah, I think very, very doable here because, because where we located that. And really put it way back, as far back as we could.
And you said it was nine feet from the low sill bulkhead to the wetland line?
Very nice scale, by the way.
I gotta get my new glasses.
So I have moved the float to the inner edge, the inner edge of the float to two and a half feet, to negative two and a half. And then a condition for fill and vegetative coverage.
On the cover sheet, so that's easy to see, not buried in the special conditions?
Okay, yeah, we'll just, we're gonna revise these plans and I'll get them, if you're satisfied, I'll have them stamped after they're revised.
That's a good, that's a good question that Phil's bringing up there. The lines that he's looking at there.
You know, you don't want this so steep.
No, you don't, yeah.
So is this coming like this?
Yeah.
Or is it coming like that?
It's pretty steep. This part is pretty steep.
This is gonna come out like this.
Yeah, well, you think we should regrade that or what do you think?
I think the...
Where, sorry, where is this? Where are you looking?
Where it comes, is it coming down this way? Or is it going at this angle where it's not so steep, hits the core, then it goes up?
Yeah, it's like a, it's like a foot and a half to two foot drop right off.
What's gonna do the best job with wave attenuation is gonna be a gradual of the wetlands there slowing down the energy?
What's gonna do it?
Well, that, that should be probably adjusted.
So what, in what manner?
Because right now, the waves are gonna come up and whack this, right?
Right.
They're gonna whack what?
The core log.
The core logs. Well, I think if you look...
It's gonna blow through the logs and then be right into the stones.
If you look at the difference in elevation, it's coming from deep water, basically, five feet. And then there's about two feet of difference between the low sill bulkhead and mean high water. That's what you're looking at, right?
Well, no, well...
But you've got the low sill bulkhead and then you've got Spartina that will help mitigate that wave energy before it hits core log.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
That's what I'm saying, maybe we should bring that elevation up a little bit. You, you think that it should change that slope like that? I mean, if, if. Alright, I'll, I'll take a look at it. If you think it would help better.
You might, instead of it's straight, have the salt go, you know, like a.
Like this. You, you wanna get. Like this? Have it come, you know, even and then really the transition there at the top end.
Yeah, that way it goes, oh, it might even save the oil, but go up, just keep on going up.
Right, I mean, you wanna get the best wave attenuation. You wanna get that energy out of the wave, so.
Okay.
If you got more of an angle.
The math taught me that.
Yeah.
About is just regrade this, and especially at this section right here, so that it's not so abrupt.
Oh, I see.
Right, so that's where you don't have energy.
It's a gradual.
Right.
Well, and sort of just before and landward through that.
Yeah. You, you, you don't want the energy bashing it. You want it, you want it to run up to it.
Yeah. Okay, alright, I think we can do that.
It took me fourteen years to learn that.
Now that you've figured the job out, you're moving on?
Yeah.
Um, any other, uh, suggestions or comments? I should.
I would just get, yeah, a couple of up-to-date pictures.
Yeah.
That way we, you can see that there's any difference.
Get the, get the float and everything to Blue Book specs.
Pass that over here.
And only because you're here, um.
Thanks, Bill.
You requested, um, a postponement of the next projects, the discussion of the next projects.
The owner did.
One of the applicants did.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
They gave.
This is association.
Okay.
I have an email. Do you want me to read the email?
It's fine. I, I was just looking for a little, uh, clarification about that perhaps, but. Just, this has been.
You have an official request to postpone.
Put a copy of the email in the folder.
In the file.
That's fine. Just, this is an extensive project. It's been a long discussed project. It's a section.
I think that we, we should not discuss it anymore.
Well, I was just kind of giving a synopsis because this is going to be passed on to the next board.
Yeah, I would, I would hold off on.
Okay, um, so we'll look forward to discussing this with the new board.
Yes.
But it's an important project, um, that will indicate extensive erosion in the area.
Okay, so that's all you have for today.
Is it being held? It's being held because of the applicants.
There's a request, there's a request for it to be held. We have an official request sent to the office. Asking it to be on hold, so.
That's it.
Grant that request.
So, John.
Very good. Again, trustee Pell, trustee Welker, trustee Parrish, thanks, thank you again.
Thank you.
And, uh, you know, Scott, you're still gonna be here, so.
Cool.
I really have to thank you now. No worries, it's a thankless job.
Happy holidays, Arum.
That's it, right?
That's it for one more general permit application determination. I have Ernest Feldman at Ten Hyler Drive Hampton Bay. You finally have stamped plans rolling in here? Meeting the, uh.
You have some plans.
Good to go. Alright.
Did they show up that, yeah, it's for one eighty-three shore or forty-two north drive?
No, I think that the only thing that we need to do now is. Hold them all?
Hold them all.
Hold them all for future, uh, reference?
And the next person, who takes it over? Can you always call me for any info?
That concludes our work session for today. See that? Bittersweet?
Yes.
Yes, definitely bittersweet.
So, but we still have exact session to go into, so. If you would like to make the official motion to adjourn, I'll just lay back and.
Actually, I just wanted to acknowledge, um, our trustee staff that always does an amazing job and has throughout the years. Our town attorney that represents the, the trustees, um, our incoming trustee elects that have been diligent about attending meetings and speaking for us, um, our outside counsel, um, and also marine maintenance and the marine patrol and all of the departments within the town that we work with extensively. Um, we will be moving within the next week or so, um, to our new headquarters in Hampton Bay's, but I just want to say that, uh, it's been, uh, it's been a pleasure to serve on this board and with all of you.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure. It's been a very productive board.
Very wonderful, very good fourteen years. Matter of fact, I heard to the great fun that you're putting a seat for me in your building. So I come.
Bring donuts.
You're putting a seat in the back building.
Yeah.
Be upstairs. Fixing the elevator up.
With pizza in the checkbook.
That's right, exactly. Pizza in the checkbook. It's been a very productive board, it has. Appropriately set at a work session. We've rolled our sleeves up and we've got, you know, right down to work and this board has resolved some of the toughest problems that the trustees were facing. And we did this in a very cohesive fashion.
We resolved the sixteen-year litigation.
We resolved the sixteen-year litigation. We got permits that were, seemed like they were impossible to get. And, uh, we did this all, you know, very nicely with a smile on our, on our faces and we just, we never gave up. We just kept right on going. And, uh, it's been a pleasure, you know, working with you all. And, uh, appreciate the opportunity to serve as your president, you know, and, uh, I did the best I could and I know you guys all did the best you could and I think that the, uh, results that we got show that. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And happy birthday, trustee Parrish.
Happy birthday, trustee Parrish. The old guy on the old board.
Eight-six-oh.
So who would like to?
Oh, man.
I'll make a motion to.
There's a motion to adjourn our work session and go into, uh, executive for the discussion of personnel illegal. Go for a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Welker, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, we will adjourn and go into exec.
Thank you, guys, very much.